Okay, we're gonna open the meeting for Monday, August 21st at 6:30. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. Steve Flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as for all.
All right, we don't have any resident comments tonight, so I'll read the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-07 in the amount of $162,661.27. Get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-07 in the amount of $730,255.23. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ed. Any discussion? What does that cover, Denise?
Mostly it's the utility bills. The light department paid a significant amount of bills, our trash, our monthly trash bill, just a handful of others.
Okay.
And I will say, I'm sorry to interrupt, you will notice we do not have a deduction warrant anymore. Our new town accountant is doing it differently, so they are also included in the regular bill warrant, our normal deductions for payroll. So that's why they'll, that number, so you'll only see the two warrants going forward.
Okay.
Is that just a, is that part of the GSA, like what is that, generally accepted accounting principle?
Yeah, it's actually, it's not really defined by that, it's just, the prior accountant was doing a completely separate warrant to keep them separate.
Okay.
She feel, I mean, there's really no need to, so she'd rather just put them right in so that they're on the same warrant as, so that they're all numbered the same.
Okay.
So they're not a week behind any longer.
So we should expect that bill warrant to be much larger?
It's not, 'cause it really wasn't huge, it was about 30,000 every pay period, so...
But that deduction warrant sometimes was over a million dollars for school stuff and everything else, so...
So that could be...
No, 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 deduction warrant was just the deductions, like federal tax and state tax and things like that. So that's just incorporated in the bill warrant now, on a bi-weekly basis.
So will we see the, like, the school assessment charges through the bill warrant?
Yes, so that won't change. The only thing that's going away is the deduction warrant, which includes the payroll deductions. Those were a pay period behind, so normally, right now, you would be doing 1805, the prior pay periods deductions. She prefers to do them in the same week so that they're on the warrant the week they're paid.
Yeah, no problem. But just so I don't lose my socks, we can expect maybe a number of $2 million in this line, I, it sometimes, right?
Oh, yes, the bill warrant, exactly.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, the bill warrant always fluctuates.
Okay.
The deduction warrant's usually around 30,000, so that's just now incorporated in the bill warrant.
Good enough. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to appointments, we have the appointment of Robert Pilozati, 41 School Street, Groveland, to the position of temporary seasonal cemetery groundskeeper. The appointment is effective August 22nd, 2017, at an hourly rate of $11 an hour, at a maximum of 19.5 hours per week, for a maximum of 15 weeks.
I'll make that nomination.
Nominated by Ed. You want a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a, I don't know if anyone has any question, I mean, any conversation on this? Hold on one second, maybe I got the wrong person here. No, um, yeah.
So I can, so, if you'll recall, you appointed a temporary seasonal cemetery employee a few weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
He resigned. We had the position posted still, 'cause they were looking for a couple of candidates for the summer. This is an older gentleman who came in and said, "I'm around all summer, I can do the work." They met with him, they think he'd be great, he'd add some stability, he doesn't need to go back to school, so they would like to move forward with his candidacy.
Okay. Anybody else for the discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Next up, appointment of Bob Danforth, 293 Center Street, Groveland, to fill the vacancy on the planning board until the next annual election.
Yes, so if I can comment on that briefly?
Yep.
So I lost his letter. He came in right before I went on vacation, gave me a letter, said he'd like to fill in. I spoke to the chairman of the planning board. It was outside the 30-day window, so they actually aren't recommending, it's just this board. I must've picked it up with some of my papers, I just couldn't find it today. So, I did speak to him, he wants to participate in the planning board, at least until the next election. He said he'll give it, you know, eight months and see if it's worth running for the full-time spot, but that's why you don't have a letter. He is interested, he did express interest, I just misplaced his letter.
Well, I personally know Bob, and he owned his own business for years, and he would be very, very good on that board. He knows his business, you know, background in the building, in, you know, land development and what have you, he, you know, I think he'd be perfectly fit that position well.
You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Robert Danforth, 293 Center Street, Groveland, to fill the vacancy on the planning board until the next election.
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion? Bill?
Can we stipulate, as opposed to his vague, until the next election, make it a firm date?
No, the law, 'cause he's, it's an elected position, so your appointment has to be until the next annual election. That's usually how, I mean, you could specify...
When is the next annual election?
May 7th. May, I'd have to look and see when it is next year. Yeah, you could certainly say that.
I think that's what he's getting at, is not...
Yeah, you could do that. Usually it's just worded next, that's the way the law reads. So it's May 7th, 2018 is the next election.
Just in case war breaks out with North Korea and we suspend all elections for the next 22 years, I mean, we have it.
Technically, you'd still be in until the next annual election, if it wasn't one next year.
We'd have bigger problems if we're worried about that.
But you can certainly specify if you'd like.
I would, if nobody else has any objection.
We make that adjustment, May 7th, 2018?
I'll amend my motion to May...
7th.
7th.
7th, 2018.
2018.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Next up, appointment of Cameron Santos, 391 Main Street, Groveland, to position of library page. This is a part-time position of up to 11 hours a week, at a rate of $11 an hour, and subject to successful query check. But do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Santar CCR, if you have questions.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Cameron Santos to the position of library page for 11 hours a week at $11 an hour, contingent on a successful query.
Give me a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
My question would be that this person, it seems like they still have a running business or working or what have you. Would, won't be a conflict on the hours when you need him, or...
No, the page hours are pretty flexible.
Okay.
So he's available after school on the days we need him.
Okay, good.
I didn't get the sense that that was his business, anyway, that's like a parent or something, right?
Yeah. Exactly.
I only read it because it said central irrigation, so, I kinda read it as it was his business. Okay, thanks, that's all.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Yes.
Discussion and possible vote, we have...
Oh, yeah. I'll go see where they are.
Yeah. We have a meeting with water and sewer commissioners to discuss departmental matters.
Hello.
Good evening.
Who's talking? You?
We are.
All of you?
Yes, so is.
You got that phone?
Okay.
Yeah, we were waiting for you.
Wow.
Efficient.
I guess you can hear me? Okay, so, we're coming before the board tonight for a couple reasons, but more for a dialogue. And to the point of the personnel bylaw, where we stand for that, where we stand with it, we've had it on our agenda now for a period of time, over a year. We've spoken with Denise about some certain things that, even a few years back, that is flawed, it has some issues, and we'd like to have a dialogue to see where we think it's gonna go, if you guys even think that it's a problem, or should be addressed. And I'd also like to speak a little bit about elected officials, and where the town's going, as far as maybe a DPW director, or what your thoughts are, where the process of that might be. So that's where I'd like to start.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
When you reference... When you reference the personnel bylaw...
Yep.
Are you speaking about something specifically within the bylaw? 'Cause that's, that's very general to me, so I'm not sure what you're talking about.
In fact, I am, it is very general, general in nature, there's many flaws in it, from what I understood, and it's been looked at by our own legal counsel, was gonna be updated a while back, and it really hasn't gone anywhere, I think, I think the other part of the problem for me, as an elected official, that, you know, we run, we run the water and sewer department, just like you people run the town of Groveland, and that's what we do. So, we bid projects, we bond them, we make sure we can carry them in our, in our water revenues.
Do you happen to know how old the existing personal bylaws are, personnel bylaws are?
I didn't tell you that.
I think early 90s.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. It's a point, the town got, got in a little bit of trouble, and specifically the water department.
Yeah.
It was, it was when it was reviewed then by council that it needs to be evaluated and possibly changed, and...
Oh, Mike, is that right?
You're good.
So how is it personally affecting the water department? Do you have any examples how it's personally affecting them?
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's bad enough, so there's a reason why, that part of it's gonna go union, I do. I think that the biggest gulp of things, for me personally, as an elected official, is that we know on a, on a weekly basis, certainly bi-weekly at the best, what, what goes on in our office and what we do. And then, you know, ultimately, we don't have final decisions over money, or raises, or things like that, because it ends up in your hands, and, well, if that's the case, then where's the protocol to go back and look at individuals, as opposed to saying, everybody gets 2%? I, I personally don't think that's fair, I think some people may deserve more than that, maybe some people deserve less, but ultimately, that decision, that financial decision, is the board's decision, and ultimately, it gets onto the warrant and to the town.
But wouldn't that be for your board to come to us and say to us, "Listen, I think this guy's worth more, he's done this, he's got these licenses and what have you..."
Correct.
"...and then come solid to us, and then we'd, we'd take it from there?"
Yeah, but, it hasn't happened in a couple of years. That, and as much as I appreciate that process, which we've tried, you know, it's, it's to get five members of the Board of Selectmen to agree that that's, in fact, the case, or how you guys evaluate that, you people evaluate that, I'm sorry, is, what's the process for doing that? Where are we? The personnel bylaw, I think, is, definitely needs to be updated. I think there's some things that, that we do are antiquated, I think, I think the elected officials are having a hard time holding the board together, there's only two of us I think it's time to think, to look personally, in personal opinion, towards the DPW, for all reasons that certainly, we talked to Denise about, and shared equipment, shared costs, and a lot of that just makes a whole lot of sense. I don't know what the board's thought process are, where it's going, but those are just, in general, some of the things I'd like to focus on tonight, and see if you guys have any ideas, or where you think it may be going, or what we may be doing.
Do you have a general timeline for when you expect these steps to, I mean, 'cause you can't change everything overnight, right? So do you have kind of an idea of, we would like to see A, happen in two years, B, happen in three years, that type of scenario?
I think the by, the personnel bylaw is something that needs to be addressed fairly quickly. I understand the process of creating the DPW and doing that's gonna take some time, and, and I understand that that would be out a few years, but I think it's imperative for the town that, that it heads in that direction.
And if I may, sorry, leave that out. So, one of the issues with the personnel bylaw is, because it's outdated in general, you really can't pick and choose a section to update, you really need to redraft an entirely new bylaw, that I think, when I first came here, I met with the board a few times and talked about rewriting the bylaws, because it'll take a significant investment on town council, it'll take a significant time here, and this board will have to make some decisions. For instance, and I've talked to some of you individually about it, one of the hardships we have here is when we try to recruit new employees. Our vacation policy is, you have no vacation to start for one full year, while trying to attract someone from another community that may have even three weeks to come here and say you have no vacation time. They're not gonna take a job in that situation. We have no flexibility when it comes to that in the current policy. So I think it's going to really change how we treat the employees, what benefits they get, and how we attract and keep employees, and I think it's gonna take some time going through section by section, with this board making those decisions.
So I have a question, is the personnel bylaw synonymous with the Personnel Procedures Manual?
Yes, it is.
So they're, they're the same thing?
Yeah, okay. It's not a formal bylaw that's, that was voted on at town meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted that.
So that's a, it looks like it's a 2005 document? Does that sound right?
No, the date on it is 2005, I actually don't think those updates were, I don't think there's an update in there from the 1992 version. And as town council, so apparently, many years ago, when there was an issue in the water department, prior to my arrival here, and town council looked at it, there's a lot of things in that policy we're doing that we shouldn't be doing. In that one policy, we have incorporated our harassment policies, discrimination policies, those should all be separate and removed from the, that dialogue in there. We don't have any pay and classification tables, where, you know, we should have grade levels, and everyone's in a range, and then, if you're hiring someone new, it's not an arbitrary, you know, cost that we're giving them, it's, you look at their range and see what that value is. So again, I think it's gonna take some time, and I started working on it, but there was no momentum from the board at the time to sort of go with it. So, if you're all up for that, we can start dissecting it and...
What do you mean, significant investment?
I think council will be heavily involved in it.
I realize that, but roundabout numbers we're talking? Guess? A million?
It's all based on hours, I don't know.
Are you talking about cost?
Certainly cap it.
Okay.
Certainly cap it, and look at another town to see what they have or might have...
Or start with another towns and then...
Well, that's what I would do anyways, is start with other towns that have successful policies, and then go from there.
Right.
I, I would suggest that rather than having the board focus on it, that we probably have people within the community that have a lot of expertise in this area, that it might not be a bad idea to consider tasking a subcommittee with working on it, and then having town council look at it, because I think that would be a sort of efficient way to potentially limit the council cost. We may have people in town that are, that have some expertise in that area, that would be willing or interested in contributing, so, rather than, I'm not an expert in personnel procedure or law, but I'm, I feel confident that there probably are some people in Groveland that are.
We just need to make sure they're municipal, 'cause it's, it's different from the municipal side of things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
DPW superintendent's position is, you know, he's, he's, I guess he's considered to be like everybody else, an employee at will, no contract, the rest of the men are gonna go union, probably, I would assume that's gonna happen, probably.
When you say they're gonna go union, that means that it doesn't necessarily, they're gonna be able to come in the door and get the money they want right away, it's gonna be negotiation back and forth, like we do with the highway now, so...
Of course it is.
If they go union, it's not gonna, it's not gonna necessarily mean they're gonna be able to get where they need to get right away, so...
And I understand that, but from my standpoint, being on the board for like the last 15 years, and the situation with the personnel bylaw, I think if I was in their shoes, I'd do exactly what they're doing. I think if we had some control over our destiny, it wasn't such a big deal, that it didn't have to get approved by this board, and then has to be approved by, you know, you people, and then, God forbid, it ends up on the town meeting floor, and just one person is, all's it takes is to not make that happen. You know, I mean, so it's a kind of a double, a double-edged sword, from my standpoint, that requires, you know, two boards to vote on, someone's competency, someone's evaluation, and whether or not they deserve 2%, 1%, 0%? I don't know how we do that. And right now, I don't think we're doing a very good job at it. I don't feel it, at least as far as the water department, sewer department goes, we are.
If every, if every department came in here and had the same, and I'm not here to argue with him, fight with him, I'm not, but if every department had the same philosophy, we'd, we'd have nothing but, you know, mayhem. And to, and to go back to what you said a minute ago about the DPW, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with you. We definitely, it is a time in this town where things aren't running efficient, and they're not running efficient because one person needs to control it, and that's the biggest problem. If you had one person control the water, and the highway, and the cemetery, and the parks, and, you know, I know Denise does a lot of the work as a finance director, I mean, it's time that we should go that route, I agree with you 100%. Maybe some of that would go away, but that's probably something that's gonna take more than a year to get taken care of. What's the short term? You know what I mean? I don't know, I don't know the right answer.
I don't, I don't either, but you know what? I thought it was time to have some dialogue about it.
I agree, 100%.
I've been on the board for 15 years, and I know about water and sewer, do I know as much as Tom does? There's no way I do.
Right.
I'm a mechanical contractor by trade, but I, you know, Tom is, you know, we are the electric board, who oversees what Tom does, and to me, that's, you know, a little backwards.
Right.
Almost sounds like you, what you're looking for, like a, like a public, like a highway superintendent, you're suggesting like added responsibilities for the road commissioner, and put him in charge of the water department?
I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm definitely not saying that, I don't, I don't know how that structure would go, maybe it's a town manager and everybody works for him, I have no idea. I, I don't know how that's gonna go.
So would you, in that, in that type of a scenario, you would, would you also advocating for getting rid of the water and sewer commissioners, and putting it under a, one, one person? Like, you're talking about a, a Department of Public Works of some sort, so you, you're talking about also doing away with the water and sewer commissioners themselves, where, like, the highway department, they don't have a, a board of three members, they have the highway superintendent that runs the highway department. And you took a look into the same thing for the water department, under, the highway department and a water department under, under the same head, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, same, yeah. I don't know how you wanna do that, but there's a variety of ways I think you could do that, but...
And doing away with the commission?
I, I think, I think the town, I think the two departments are so isolated, it's, it's, it's a little crazy, you know what I mean? We have trucks and backos over here, and then sometimes we don't, and then we have, and that's just a matter of fact, the way it is. To me, it makes more sense if we're a team, working together, sharing equipment, doing the same thing, I know Bill agrees with us, but, you know, we'd be much more effective. Let us not forget, though, there needs to be a structure, an evaluation for personnel, you know what I mean? That if the Board of Selectmen have that final word, then where do those people answer to? Who do they answer to?
If you had that, if you had that, that setup with a DPW director, the DPW director would probably listen and, and deal with all those little problems, or raises, and what have you, they would probably then come to the, either the finance director or the selectmen, and it would be discussed that way. So you'd have one person that would control all them little pieces, and then it would come in. So you're not gonna have an elected official, an appointed official, and all this hubbub that goes on, you won't have that, you know what I mean? So, you know, some people say, you know, should we be growing government? No, but should we make government run smoothly? Yes.
More efficient.
And that's what we don't have, it's not efficient, agreed. So I, I agree what you're saying, it's just how do we get there, you know?
Well, I think, I think, for us personally, and for some of you, this first time, may have heard some of these remarks, but the personnel bylaw goes back to a disaster before Denise ever got here, and it's, it's still sitting there, it's not gonna get any better, it's time we had dialogue about it, that we can move forward and do something with it. Understanding, I, I work in the private sector, so I know how fast we can get things done, and I understand, I'm not unreasonable, but I'm just, it's a discussion at this point.
Have you done any research of how, how similarly situated towns, so let's say we looked at towns with a similar population to Groveland, whether any of those towns have had success with having a person in a capacity like you reference?
Senator Tom, Tom may be a little similar, but, I haven't delved into that at all, but...
I don't have anything that I could go to and say, yes, it works here, or no, it doesn't work there.
Is that something that your board or commission would be willing to look into and bring back before the Board of Selectmen as a, as a starting point for discussion?
I, I think actually the finance board had had that discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, they had looked at, I mean, there are other organizations out there, whether it's a municipal organization, Merrimack Valley Planning Association, there are consultants that you can go to, something similar...
I'm talking about not costing money?
Well, I mean, I guess we could look at all the options and see what the best bang for the buck is. I mean, I know when you talk about consultant, that's gonna cost money, when you're talking about an agency like Merrimack Valley Planning Association, well, they, they'll come in and do that, and I don't know if it's a mass municipal type situation, and Denise probably has actually more information on that than I would, and that can comment on that, but I think it's, it's the, probably the best way to start, why reinvent the wheel, and look at a situation that, that is similar. I mean, you're gonna find places that are, you know, whether it's a Merrimack, or a Rowley, or, you know, Georgetown, or whatever, it's, I think they all have the same needs, and it's about looking at, at those and maximizing the return on, on what you're gonna get. I think making things more efficient, whether it's utilizing all your resources here, in town, with the DPW, and that's a collaborative, whether it's, it's paying in on certain things, cost sharing, from this budget to that budget, I think that's ultimately where you're gonna, you're gonna probably make your, your biggest savings, is when it's all kind of under one umbrella, and then you start kind of moving that around. As far as personnel, and how you, you know, you share that out, that can be a little bit difficult, depending on capital plan and the needs for the town. You know, how many lawns do you have to cut? How much pipe are we putting in the ground? What are we maintaining for drains? It becomes a total asset management type program, where it gets a lot bigger, and that's where the efficiency comes in, but you do have to spend money to get that, you don't get it for nothing. So it's, it is part of the process. I mean, I see here in town already...
When you say...
...some of it that's been, like your permitting program, that's been a huge efficiency to the, to the town, so much that I'm actually starting to look into that, for some of the things that we do. So it's kind of implementing some of that, and, and Sam did a great job, like getting a grant and bringing that in, and kind of having that pay for itself, so it's kind of looking at things in that nature, I think is, is a good model.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, back to your original comments, that you've been at this for a while, where's the process broken down, that we haven't been able to push this across the goal line for a significant amount of years?
As far as what?
As far as...
I desire to do it.
Personal bylaws, as far as budgetary issues, where you don't feel that you're getting the voice that you deserve on some of the... Salary increases, things... I mean, Mr. Point, I think the town decides to give everybody a raise at 2%. Goddess of what you do for the town. I don't think that's fair, at all, for anybody, I think everybody needs to be evaluated, maybe 2% is too much. But... Couldn't agree with you more. The, the personnel bylaw's been broken for a long time. I, I have no idea why it doesn't get going again, I have no idea, when, when a council tells you that it's antiquated, I have no idea why it's still sitting there stagnant, I don't know. So it's been... I have a hard enough time focusing on the water and sewer department, it's...
All of the reluctance of prior boards to help push, facilitate this for you. How does, how does this, how does your personal bylaw document differ from others the town currently has in use?
There's only one.
There's only one? You have the only?
The town has only one.
There is one personnel procedures manual that covers all non-contractual employees and non-union employees.
Okay, so it's not only broken for you, it's broken for everybody?
Correct.
So if you, if you were to take the situation we just had with the zoning board and the zoning board turned around and put a subcommittee in to help change their bylaws. And I think it's worked pretty efficiently. Maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to get a group of people together that are willing to work on the personnel bylaws.
Well, I mean, I can give you samples. I have draft bylaws. But then this board needs to make the decisions on what you want to do as far as classifications, salaries, vacation time, benefits, bereavement leave, things like that that have not been updated in 20 years.
I really, yeah, I'd really like to see a committee work on that. I think the example of the zoning bylaws is a perfect example. Again, I think we have people in town that are bright and that can maybe spend a little bit more time on this. As much as I appreciate that you may have the information available to you, I don't think that the wealth of your time should be spent doing another personal bylaw. I think that we need to differentiate kind of what your role is as finance director and have somebody work on that and submit it to the board.
Yes, but just, I am also the personnel director, so I should be involved in that process.
Absolutely, but again, I think when you look at a finance director's position, I think what the state says in terms of what that position should entail, I'm not sure that it would say that that should be part of it as well.
Oh, it does. The actual legislation that created the position identifies personnel as part of it.
As the director?
It says personnel functions as assigned by the board.
Okay, so I would say that again, knowing all the functions that you have, I don't think that should be the bulk of what you're doing. Do I think that you should be involved in that process? Absolutely, but for you to take on that task is going to take a huge part of your position. And I know that there's a lot of other things that you're working on. And I think that we could have some other people do some of the work and then you can be kind of overseeing that. But not having to do all the grunt work, basically. I mean, I don't mean to put it in those terms, but it's a lot of work.
How many cities in town do you have in Massachusetts? Okay, I use one word, plagiarism.
Well, like I said, I have, I have tons of them.
You know, modify it, a good one to fit our needs without recreating the wheel.
Right.
But I'm not a personnel expert and I don't think anybody on this board is, so.
Well, that's why we have town council.
We're going to pay town council. We're going to pay them for every piece of that. Why not bring some people in that might have some expertise prior to having town council review that? To try and sort of minimize what we have to pay town council.
Sure, that's why you, you grab someone else's that's already been approved and you've beaten half the carrot down already.
Right.
Would this be something that would be over the finance board? Would they be able to look at something like this? No.
No, because again, I think once you have the format, it's going to come back to this board regardless to decide what benefits you want to give to your employees.
So you already have structures and outlines that we can go off of. It's the details that this board has to vote on anyways. The 15 or 20 details. So we could actually.
I'd say there's probably more than 15 or 20 details. I mean, I think we're talking a complete overhaul of a personnel manual. It's about a 40-page document.
It depends on much of a template we can get raw to begin with. The more robust the template we have, less detail we have to add, less effort and time.
How much time will it take you to get these templates?
Sure it has them.
Yeah, I already have them.
It's not going to take you much time to get them?
Well, it's a matter of if you.
No, no, all I'm saying is if it's not going to take you that much time to get them, in the next meeting, can we have the templates and we can just look at a few of them?
Yeah, of course.
You know what I mean? Then it might be a starting point.
Any place is just a better starting point to where we are now. And even if it's, if it's vague.
So we're moving forward with the personnel part anyways. It'll be a slow process, but at least we have something to go off of in the next couple of weeks. But again, I think it's more of the details that we have to vote on as a board rather than the outline that we can just take as a, as a structure, so.
I think he has one more uphill battle and that is the battle of an appointed personnel versus elected personnel. Even this board has little to no authority over some of these elected folks. So it's.
I think that's the benefit of bringing in outside people because you get kind of a bipartisan view. And rather than just the view of the board of selectmen, you have community members that are weighing in on that.
Right, but if I can finish. If you have an elected person that's only answerable to the voters once every election cycle, whoever that is, it becomes difficult to bring them to the table and get them to understand that we all need to pull the rope in the same direction. Because they have different priorities and their priorities may not be the sewer commissions or this commissioner, that board or this board's. And again, I only have to worry about it the next time I, I come up for election. So you still have an uphill battle, I think, as far as I can see. Even if you, even if the town decided to hire a head of DPW or whatever you want to call it, right? Call it department A, right, for example. If the director of department A doesn't have complete control over every, all these town functions, it's not going to work, you know what I mean?
As an uncontested elected official, I don't know how many times I've run. That's really, it's not about elections, it's about keeping the water department operating, running, running efficiently, quality of water. They can do a good job at that.
Wouldn't we need the format anyway, though? Wouldn't we need the format?
Well, I think part of.
A format, some kind of a format?
Yeah, and I think part of the challenge is, I agree with Bill regarding sort of the need to have appointed positions versus elected positions. And I think that's been kind of a chronic and ongoing issue that unfortunately the community has not supported making those positions appointed.
I think it might be our failure to educate the electorate in the benefits that they would receive by making the changes necessary to have accountability.
But I think part of that comes from bringing them into the process. Then you get the buy-in piece, sort of like we did with the zoning bylaws. Because then we brought the community in and they sort of sold it to other members of the community as opposed to the board of selectmen being the primary stakeholder selling it to the community. So that's, that's the piece that I'm sort of referring to.
Are you just, are you talking about the bylaws? Are you talking about a DPW?
Yeah, there's two different issues, two different issues. Two different issues.
They go together though. So the issue is.
Difference related, absolutely.
But you can't really change the bylaws, you can't change the structure of the bylaws to be more efficient if you view the more, the efficiency as being an appointed position without having that in place. So, you know, it's putting the cart before the horse. That's the question. Right, but the challenge is there's no centralized head.
There's no point person.
Yes, there's no, so what you're saying, I think what you articulated earlier was that the challenge is there's no central person that sort of. Is it operations person?
You digging up God in the street and someone else filling you back in, so it's not like this as you go down the street, right?
Sharing of resources. That was one of the things.
I know, I know. Listen, I'm hearing you all the time. I, I get you. I get you. That's why I said you got an uphill battle still.
All together.
You have a, you have a committee. I'd like to see somebody from the finance board on that committee because obviously if you have a, if you have a head of a Department of Public Works, if you're going in that direction, without, without question, there's going to be an increase in wages that we can't afford. So somebody from the finance board ought to be sitting on there to, to try to help us through this. And eventually they're going to get it. If, if there's a proposal for an increase in wages, which there probably will be, then they, they should, they should have a seat at the table.
I have an industry and business background and if you make, it doesn't have to be an expense if you can, if you can offset it by with greater efficiencies. Then you offset those costs.
Exactly where I was going.
And even, and plus, so if done right and done correctly, it should benefit everybody and it's a win-win situation. It shouldn't be an added cost. It should be a benefit and a reduction in overall cost and, and, and an increase in overall efficiencies to everybody at the end of the day. It's about, it's business.
Those efficiencies pay out over time rather than.
It should pay dividends to your citizens, is what it should do.
Any dollar you take out of the cost today, you know, that you can eliminate forever, that, that, that return is, is just infinitesimally. It just continues to, you know, give that gift.
Right, so the efficiencies that you would see, yes, you would still have or you would have an additional salary by having a person above sort of the superintendent, if you will, that is whatever position you want to call it, DPW or. But the benefits you would see are, as you know, Jim articulated, you wouldn't have the same equipment in two different departments. You wouldn't need to replace backos in the highway department and the water department. If there's a water main break, you re-allocate your resources and take them off street sweeping and put them on the water main break. If there's a snowstorm, you take the water guys and put them on plowing. If there's an issue with the cemetery, you put resources there at the cemetery. So the fact that you'd have one person, you still have enterprise funds and you still budget separately. But the fact that you would have someone that would then control all those resources to be able to move them around as needed, have everyone cross-trained to be able to fill in where, where needed and then you're not replacing equipment as you are and things like that. So the efficiencies would definitely come, but you would have to put that front cost of adding additional salary for a person at that top level.
So that being said, we really have a complex conversation going on because really the personnel bylaw needs to be taken care of. That's over and above a DPW director. So you've got two different stories right there going on. We're intertwining where we shouldn't be. We should be discussing personnel bylaw, resolve that. Then we should be talking about, do we want to get a DPW director? We should talk about that. And then you've got salaries which the DPW director could probably, you wouldn't have a salary, a high salary in the water department and a high salary in the, in the, in the highway. You'd take those two salaries, bring them into one and the, and the cost would probably maybe a little more, but probably not exceed like craziness. So what I was trying to say a minute ago is the personnel bylaw, if that's an issue, we really should try to either, we have to do it. If we have those copies that you have, give them to us, let us mull them over, look at them. And then if we think we need to have a subcommittee or whatever, I mean, it sounds like this board has the ultimate, ultimate say. But the subcommittee maybe can take those, walk off with them, do their work with them and come back to us. I, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, I think Jim was trying to get to multiple steps as to what could be fixed. But the first step is the bylaws, obviously. With knowing that there's several other things down the road that'll have to come after that's fixed. Are you guys kind of done with your topics or do you have other things you wanted to? Or did we already stir enough up that? I was hoping that was enough.
I just, you know, I've been doing it for 15, I'll be honest with you, I've been doing it for 15 years. I was on the fire department for 15. I'm getting a little long in the tooth. It's me and John Gray and, you know, it doesn't look like a lot of people are going to keep running. I think that should be a concern. That's all.
Well, at least we had a good conversation. We have a starting point, as Bill said, that's better than we had when we first started. So we'll get some of these outlines and then we'll figure out, we need a subcommittee to go forward and, and adjust it to our needs. And then we'll have to have the board vote on individual aspects of it, as Denise laid out. Then once we get that done, then we can start looking at an overall picture for how the town hall will operate as a complex. Bring in all the departments under one head, if that's what we do, elected or appointed. And then see if we can structure something from there. But we'll be asking you guys for input too, because I'm not an expert in any of this.
Could I ask a question? Is it possible that there wouldn't need to be an added position? There could, if, if we, when you begin to look at those, so there's a head of the highway department, there's a head of the water department. Is it possible that one of those positions could be redesigned to perform a multi-function, which would be that particular department and the oversight? Is it necessary that there would be an added position or is it, is it possible that there might be somebody that has the expertise that could cover sort of a leadership role in one of the departments and still kind of an oversight role as well?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't throw anything out at this point.
Can I just kind of put that out there as a, something to kind of mull over? Whether there's the potential that somebody could be in an organizational role without necessarily being an added role?
Yeah, you could look at that. You know, whether the town manager is in the discussion and you're talking about kind of a pyramid structure where you have multiple layers within that structure. I mean, I think that's ultimately what the town should be looking at. Certainly, looking at all the tasks that everybody has to manage and then allocating those has to be in the discussion. Because if you can have a cost savings there, yeah, I mean, why not? And I, I guess, you know, I'd add, you know, there's always a lot of people that have opinions about certain departments and water and sewer department being one of them. If you're a citizen out there, we have an open seat. Come on in, sit down, join the crowd. We have a lot going on. We have, you know, a lot on our plate as a town to address as far as the infrastructure and what needs to be done. So there, there's, you know, have a voice. I mean, Jim's been here 15 years and there are other gentlemen that sat on this board for just as long, if not longer. So I know it's maybe a bit of a dying breed, but it's okay to, you know, step up.
Get your feet wet, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Can I just ask for you both to repeat your names?
I'm sorry, I'm Tom Cusick.
And Jim, what was your last name?
Doesn't have one. It's like Beyonce. It's just Jim.
Sheehan, S-H-E-E-H-A-N, Water and Sewer Commissioners.
One last comment, gentlemen. Don't, don't ever be afraid to stir the pot because if you don't stir the pot, the meal doesn't get cooked.
Some aspects you look at it and it's, it's a little bit unfair sometimes. You know, Denise does have a lot on her plate and, you know, it's something that needs to be addressed. And we didn't come here to circumvent or do anything else other than, you put this on the table and it needs to be addressed and, you know, in that fashion, our priority.
Can't fix a problem unless you know it's there.
We have daily conversations about it. I mean, she's got a lot of good ideas.
So because our DPW director.
What's another line on the email?
Hey, she's got a big hat rack and.
Salary cut.
Who's calling?
From DPW, this is, you know, Fran from finance. Come on.
All right, we'll get, we'll get started on this somehow. If there's any other input, just let us know. Otherwise, we'll try and get some updates for the next meeting at least. All right, awesome.
Yeah, I think a dialogue is going to be great.
Awesome. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have rule of selectmen discussion, follow-up article from Mass DOR. Lisa, this is your topic, so.
So I guess, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up. It may be, it sort of goes hand in hand. But I think that as a board, we really need to look at the open meeting component of our roles. And that, you know, I don't know what the appropriate forum is to discuss that. And I want to be respectful of other members. So I will take your cue on that. Okay, so for instance, recently there was an email exchange and it was a sort of a, it's a deliberation. We can't do that. That's a, that's a violation of the open meeting law.
We realized that and it wasn't a conversation among board members. It was a conversation to Denise about a topic.
It's still a deliberation.
The topic was a time-sensitive topic to a business at hand. So if we determined not to do anything, that business would have suffered, which I think is more detriment than not making a decision.
Well, we would have had to have an emergency meeting. I spoke with the AG's office about this and they said it was clearly a violation of the open meeting law. You can be angry at me that I want to follow the rules, but that's what the rules say.
I understand the rules. I understand that you want to follow the letter of the rules, but sometimes you have to make decisions based on the situation.
Not when they're a violation of the law.
The situation called for a decision to help out a business in town that was given wrong information by someone on the board. Which came down to two or three days, they had to make a decision whether or not to move forward with their event. had to make a decision whether or not to move forward with their event.
There was sufficient time to have an emergency meeting.
There was not.
There was.
There was not.
How was there not, can you explain that to me?
Yeah, there was not because there was not enough time to coordinate with everybody on the board, that's why. So we talked through Denise in order to make a decision, your response was not to make a decision.
My response was it wasn't appropriate to engage in that deliberation.
Do you have a topic to go over, are you just going to throw more darts at people?
I'm going to file a formal complaint with the AG's office because we're not, this is not productive.
It isn't productive, because you come up here and you throw darts at people every night about stuff that you just want to complain about. I'm trying to have a conversation on, let's see, this is role of the selectmen and you want to say that we should be conducting ourselves as appropriate to this document, but I don't think it applies to everybody on the board. I think it's selective to who you want this to apply to.
Who does it not apply to?
Well, I'm not having random meetings or making unilateral decisions out in the field. I come to the board, I tell everybody who I'm talking to, what I'm talking about, and I report back on everything I'm doing. I don't think everybody does that and I think that's what you're getting at, but I don't think you're applying that same type of conversation to everyone unilaterally, I think you're picking who you want to go after. And I take offense to that because I know I'm not doing anything wrong. This job is about talking to people, this job is about meeting with people and voicing their concern, bringing it back to the board on who and what you're talking about.
What was the violation?
I don't know.
So the violation was that a deliberation occurred by email. So if you look at the open meeting law, what constitutes?
I think you need to step back a little bit and actually get to the point of how we got to that.
Yes, can we discuss the root cause of the email, please?
Well, here's my other concern about that, is that information, Denise had information, why wasn't that information disclosed at the meeting so it could be discussed at the meeting? We had a meeting Monday night and we got an email the following morning saying, I didn't want to bring this up at the meeting, I didn't want to bring this up at last night's meeting.
Because it was an agenda item? I don't know.
I don't know when the information came to your attention, but that was the opportunity to bring up that information, rather than the following day when we couldn't act on it and then that necessitated what you viewed as an emergency vote via email.
Bill?
Again, can I understand, can we get to the root cause of why the email string was necessary to begin with? And I think that solves all the problems. You always go back to the root cause of a problem, you fix the root cause and you don't have that problem anymore. Business 101, so can we understand the root cause of this email? I think that'll help everybody understand the necessity for the email, the last-minute email that we all had to respond to.
Denise, do you have the starting points on where this started from and the?
There's a certain establishment, I guess, in town.
Baseline.
So Monday before the meeting, I was presented information about an event occurring in town.
The same day of the meeting?
The same day of the meeting. I actually had no information other than it was presented to me. I didn't bring it up because I didn't have all the facts. I came in Tuesday morning, I researched, I went through the law, I identified the issues, I then drafted a letter to the business owner, sent it off to his email, at which point he then called me and that's what facilitated the email to the board. So he called me and said, I've already invested a significant amount of money, I've been doing this for years, there's been no complaints, I don't understand why now it's a problem, why can't I have this event? To which I said, it's not my decision, I can't allow you to bypass the law, that's not up to me, it's, in my opinion, it's an enforcement matter and these things are not permitted under our bylaws or Mass General Law.
But the other piece of that is that you sent out a letter and the board wasn't part of the decision to send out that letter. So if the board had weighed in on that prior to the letter being sent out, we may not have been in that position. So that's my other concern.
How did this particular business owner get the impression that he had permission to hold this event?
So, he said he's done it for years since he's been in town. I will say, Ed, he did say he spoke to you at one point and you told him you didn't think it would be a problem, so I don't know, that's all I know, when he called.
So General Haig is here, we're all set.
I'm sorry, what?
General Haig, it's an old reference. So that's the root cause of this emergency, basically. We had a business owner that was given, it sounds like unilateral permission, to hold an event on his premises that we found out about last minute and then in order to basically mitigate this person's huge financial investment stake in this event, we allowed it to continue. Am I, if I got the chronological kind of facts in order just so I can wrap my head around this whole thing?
Yes.
To continue with the understanding that next year, you have to go through the appropriate permitting applications with the bylaws and the zoning to make sure you're in compliance with everything that the town requires going forward, which had not been enforced for five years or six years, whatever it's been.
I just know, it said, his flyer said the fourth annual and he said he's done it since he's been in town.
Who's the enforcing authority when a business is not complying with?
Well, there are several, so he was not in, he was in violation of his common vic churler's license, which falls under this board. And then the zoning and then, I guess this board would oversee the entertainment portion of it as well.
And did they have a police officer at each of these venues?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay.
Was there liquor involved at these venues?
No, not that I know of, he did not say there was liquor.
Good. If that was, if you mentioned it was on Tuesday, did you have that information? What was on their, their time, we had, we had over a week to call a special meeting, only needed three people who had done it legally at an open meeting. There was plenty of time to, I think, to post a meeting and take the vote the way it should have been, rather than done over polling through an email.
Couldn't agree more, but when did, when did, when did this person get the impression from you that he had the permission?
I don't know why I do. I was unaware of it until, I mentioned it to Denise, I don't know when it was, was it on the Monday, maybe it was the Monday?
You had no prior conversation, so this man just kind of pulled it out of thin air that he had this?
Yeah, in fact, when I spoke to him last week, he said, gee whiz, he says, I thought I mentioned it to you. I said, I never knew that.
So I will tell you the urgency was on his part, he said he was going to lose a significant amount of money if he needed to cancel, that it had to be as soon as possible.
I think Tuesday, you sent the letter, Wednesday, he came in.
Yeah, I think so. He didn't come in, he called me.
Right, but then I thought he came in like Wednesday or Thursday or something, which if we were going to have to do something, he needed an answer.
He needed an answer, but he didn't come in, it was all.
The only thing I'm going to say, is I sit here and listen to this. I understand he said, she said and all that good stuff, bottom line is, the guy had done it for the past four years, number one. Number two, I would hope as a board, we would help our business people in this town, because we're trying to keep business and we're trying to be friendly to business, so whatever it took to, whatever it took to make this error or whatever took place to make it right. So if I was a chairman or whoever, I would have probably done the same thing, I would have probably pulled the board and asked them, this situation took place and I'm trying to work for this businessman and what have you and I read the emails and I didn't think it was going to turn into this thing, I thought it was resolved by just turning around and saying, we polled the board, we got the poll and what have you, the guy can carry on with his business and make money, I mean, that's what we should be all about, people watching this should not watch us hash about shutting down businesses and not letting them have events and having these big, long discussions over this. Maybe we're getting away from the role of a selectman, but that's all I'm saying.
I agree with you, that's what my thought was in, all the way through, was how do we limit the exposure for this individual and the business, understanding how much investment he has and the number of people expected at this event, while him understanding that next year this all has to change and be compliant. It wasn't about going rogue or unilaterally making decisions, it was about how do we get the most impact and get this guy what he needs, short-term, in order to fix it for long-term? That was the only thing.
But also with the understanding that he had it in his mind, that he had already been given that permission verbally or otherwise, somehow imputed. I kind of felt boxed into a corner at that point, because, you know, to Mr. Dunn's point, you don't want to hurt your fellow citizens of the businesses in town, that's not what we're all about, but you would like to have a little bit of notice when something like that goes on, just so you can be prepared when the phone rings at 3:00 in the morning and, you know, 22, guy just left this event in 2:30, oh geez, I didn't know about it, you know, you hate to get caught, you know, not understanding and not having that forewarning of what's going down before it actually goes down, just puts you in a very difficult, you know, spot.
Right.
So I think all of these makes sense, I just think that, and this can be the end of the topic, I don't think we get to pick and choose when we comply with the open meeting law, unfortunately. As much as I hear all of these, they're valid, I just don't think that we have the luxury of getting to pick when we comply with it and that's all that I'm going to say.
Can you explain how this violated open meeting law with conversations with other board members directly?
It's a deliberation, so anytime, so if you look at what constitutes a deliberation, it's basically the only time that any type of vote can be made is in an open meeting. And short of that, the only kind of contact that the board can have as a whole is about basically meeting times, meeting agendas, procedural information, nothing substantive can be decided in that manner.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, doing nothing would have been better than trying to help?
Having an emergency meeting is really, and there are going to be instances like this and that's our role.
Right, but I think if I'm remembering the sequence of events, this was, a letter went out Tuesday, the next conversation happened Wednesday and then, I know I wasn't around for Thursday, if not Wednesday and Thursday. So the bottom line is, if you want to file a complaint, file a complaint. I'm just trying to do what's best or what's possible or trying to help out someone without having them be raked across the coals for putting out a bunch of money where they thought they were in compliance and thought that they were okay. On the 12th hour, 11th hour, they figure out that things going sideways and need to figure out how to fix it quickly, that's where the effort came from. Anybody else have anything on this topic?
No, I'm just going to ask a quick question, if someone can answer it, that'd be great. A role of a selectman, I thought was that when you have three selectmen in a room, that would be considered deliberating? I thought when you had conversation between one selectman or the chairman to the other boards, I thought that was fine, I didn't, I, when you are present outside of town hall and there's two or more selectmen, you can't do that, you can't deliberate, you can't talk, period, but yet the chairman could filter down a conversation through, no?
Not when there's a vote taken? So it can be related to, you know, sort of scheduling type stuff, but like I said, if it's, if it's an issue of a vote, it can't even happen in that way.
Anybody else? Bill? Bill said?
Yeah, I understand how the problem happened now, just, I think now that we understand the root cause, we have to understand that that can't happen again, that no one person, regardless of what anybody believes they heard, can give authority like that.
But I think that that's sort of unfair, because Ed is saying that that didn't happen, so we've got sort of like a, you know, we don't really know exactly what happened, clearly there was a breakdown in communication in some way.
Absolutely, so what I'm saying is, out there, all you folks in the audience, if you think you have permission to hold this after-hours event and you haven't got a permission through the town, you probably don't have it regardless of what anybody told you.
Or through a formal vote, so basically no member can sort of give that type of permission independently.
Right, so I don't, what I don't want to see is someone else inadvertently be placed in that position unknowingly, so let's just throw out the, you know, public service announcement now and make that disclaimer that, you know, check before you invest a lot of money, because you may not have what you think you have.
All right, that was fun, moving on. We were supposed to have the chair of the library trustees come in, Lee, but Lee sent an email and I will read that to the board, so they know why we are not talking to the library trustees.
Can I ask a question about that? What was the topic? Because it says his name, but there's no topic for discussion.
Well, it was the topics that were based on the last meeting, which was the finances and the investments, it was the member of the board who no longer lives in town and then it was the request for the sign, I believe. I think those are the three items that we were, talked about last meeting.
So who asked to have the meeting?
I invited Lee in the library to come in and talk to us about the, I guess, issues, but I'll read the email that they had sent back to me earlier this afternoon. This is to me, Kathy Prunier and Barbara Gavin. Hi, I've noticed on the agenda for tonight's meeting that my part has just my name with no other subject provided, because that is too ambiguous, I must decline answering any questions you might have. It would be inappropriate for me to say anything having to do with library board policy without consulting with the board, getting their input and voting if necessary. I will be there in support of our interim directors' hiring requests, but if you have any questions, you and/or other members of the board of selectmen should come to one of our meetings. Our next meeting is September 30th at 6:00 PM at the library. Thanks, Lee Thomas. So if anybody on the board wants to go to the meeting, September 13th at 6:00 PM, as long as there's not three of us there, then we can have a dialogue there. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have one, so if you would have put it back on and asked them with description, would they come? Could we find that out?
We can ask. If they had, if they had what?
If there was, I guess, I can't speak for Lee, but it sounds like he wasn't, go ahead.
It was, you're talking about Bill?
Yeah, if it was just.
Lee, you don't have to talk a lot, did you just want to get an idea of the topics at hand? Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, my name, Lee Thomas, forebaldwin terrace, chair of the board of trustees of library. Yeah, because all it said was Lee Thomas on the agenda, I wasn't sure where.
I think, I think the, the idea was to have you have the conversation, not everyone on the board come in and try to talk.
That would be, that would be inappropriate, I think, if I, for me to, I mean, it'd be me speaking as a citizen of Groveland, but not really appropriately as a member of the board, because it would be just me.
But you're the chair, right?
Yeah, but I'm not the dictator, I'm the chair of a committee.
The chair has to make decisions in consult with the, with the board.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, is that if there are specific issues, your board needs to weigh in on those before you articulate them on behalf of the board.
Yeah, but I'm not saying they can't talk through you, I'm just saying that you would be the point person talking, rather than having five, six, seven people trying to talk to us all at once.
Right, but I, yeah, but I can't, I have, I have eight other members on the board who would have input on any of the topics that you brought up before and I couldn't go to them at our last meeting and say, this is what we want to talk about at the selectmen's meeting, because I didn't know what you wanted to talk about at the selectmen's meeting and it would be inappropriate for me to say something without their input.
Okay, so as a board of selectmen going through the chair, I would ask the chair to direct to you the three topics, the topics right now that were going to be discussed and then maybe have the board and you come back, you can talk about in your next meeting or whatever and then come back and talk to us.
Yeah.
That would be great, I mean, and I'm only speaking of me as a select person, nobody else here. I mean, we need to get better dialogue going on.
That, well, you know, the.
And I can, I've watched your meetings and I can see that you're, you're proactive, I can see it, we just need to get some better dialogue, we got to get in here, we got to sit them down, let's talk, let's, you know, let's get this working, you know what I mean? That would be great, you know what I'm saying? And I think you're probably the right person to do it, but, and I understand you don't want to stand up there as Lee Thomas and talk to us, I clearly understand your point 100% and, and no more than I would be the, you know, I think the way that Mike was probably thinking, I'm not going to speak for Mike, but what he just explained was maybe you as the chair, talk, but I get your point, you would rather have your eight members with you and have a little discussion beforehand, maybe.
The thing is that, part of the reason when, when Mike asked me to come to a selectmen's meeting, I said yes, is I feel the same way that you do, that there needs to be better communication, I mean, every, every. there needs to be better communication. I mean, every, every organization in this town does what it does for the good of the town, not for any individual member who's on it. And I think that the town would be best served, the library best served, the town would be best served if there's communication between your, your board and, and the board of the library trustees. And that's, I mean, that's the reason I was, I said, okay. But I can't say okay to what I didn't know what I was gonna talk about, so.
I got it. Anybody have anything else?
And just one other thing, because I want to clarify, I want to have a better understanding. I don't think that a member of the board of selectmen can go to your meeting without being on the agenda and expect to speak at that meeting. We can go as an observer of that meeting, but we can't engage in a dialogue at that meeting unless it's on the agenda.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any objection. I don't think that my members would either, having someone from the board be on the agenda if they had specific questions.
So we would have to decide as a board whether somebody from the board is going to go as a representative and potentially ask questions and bring it back to the board. But I don't think sort of that could just be done without it kind of being put as an agenda item.
Right, right.
Bill, did you have something?
I just want to applaud Mr. Thomas for coming here today. I mean, honestly, I've been trying to get this dialogue going since I got here. And you can't start a dialogue until you get two people in the same room that are willing to look at each other face to face and start that dialogue. I know I've been very critical. And obviously, it worked because you're here. And dialogue can't start until we, we get in the same room. So I hope we can have more specific questions for you and that you'll come back again soon so that we can begin to have this dialogue, so that we all win. That's what we, that's what I want. My goal is, is for all of us to win, okay? I don't dislike anyone. I dislike foolishness and inefficiencies and things like that. That stuff drives me nuts. But I also know that you can't begin to, to heal and, and to fix these things until you can get together and start with the things that you agree upon as opposed to things we disagree upon. So I thank you so much for coming in tonight, even though we didn't get very far. I, I feel real good right now that we're going to have the dialogue that's been long, long overdue and that we're gonna push these things forward to the benefit of this board, to the patrons at the library, to the trustees at the library, and to the citizens of the town. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to votes of the board. We have the minutes from July twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. Everybody get a chance to read over those?
Put those over and they appear to be in order and I move them past.
Get a second?
I'll second you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Certificate of Achievement to Jeremy Frederick for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Congratulations. Is he here?
No, so this is quite common. You'll see the letter that's included. When one of our residents attains the rank of Eagle Scout, we get a letter from usually the committee chairman asking this board to recognize them. So they are having a ceremony on September sixteenth here in Groveland at the Congregational Church where they will award him the certificate as well as other certificates of achievement. So.
I'd like to read the certificate of achievement. Certificate of Achievement presented to Jeremy Frederick in recognition of your achievement of obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations, Jeremy, on achieving your goal. We are so proud to have you as a member of our community and appreciate your efforts to create an outdoor reading garden at the Langley Adams Library. Your work from raising the funds to designing the space and finally building the area was truly amazing. The community and the library patrons will benefit greatly from this quiet, comfortable area with benches, chairs, and raised gardens. We wish you the best of luck in the future. Signed, the Board of Selectmen, Michael N. Wood Chairman, Lisa Dubecop and the Vice Chairman, William F. Dunn, William G. O'Neil, and Edward Watson, Selectmen. And if anybody hasn't seen that over there, he did a tremendous job. It looks nice.
Do we, do you have a copy for us to sign?
Yes, so it's over here, but you should vote just formally.
So can we get a motion?
I'll make the motion. Certificate of Achievement to Jeremy Frederick for obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Moving on to old business. Bill O'Neill, anything for old business?
Old business. Yeah, can we get a, is it possible to get an update on the bathroom situation down at the Pines? I don't think they're open yet, right?
They are not.
So spring has slipped into summer, which is about to slip into fall, which is about to slip into next spring. In the meantime, those porta-johns, are on our tab?
Yes.
So, I don't know. I give up sometimes. Do we have any kind of update on when this thing, now that we have a hundred and fifty kids down at the Pines practicing everyday football along with their parents and younger brothers and older siblings, and when those bathrooms might be open to the public use?
I don't have an update. I know they go down there and work when they have time in their schedule. I just, I haven't gotten an update lately. I can certainly ask for one.
Is this the part of the project where we saved a lot of money? Not really. You're right.
Because how much, how much are we paying for porta-potties?
It's like a hundred and twenty dollars a month.
This is the part I tried to explain a while ago, that, you know, you don't always save money. If a project takes several times or longer than it should, where is the value? You don't have any value. And you don't, you're not saving any money. You're not.
Well, the other piece is that we don't even have any say in getting it done quicker.
We don't now. We should have. Because I said from the get-go, too much on one plate means none, none of the meal gets eaten properly.
So, Mike? So for the next meeting, can we get a written update or a update?
Yeah, I can certainly speak to him.
I know we talked about the last meeting, and I know you've been on vacation, but if we can get an update?
Bill, anything else?
Man, just get the toilet open. That's enough for me right now.
Small wins. Lisa?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to give an update on the committee, the Elm Parks slash square, that I have gotten some responses and that I plan to request that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting so that I can put forward the names. But I have gotten some responses, and I'll share those with the rest of the board for the September meeting.
Hey, I got a few. The land sales. How are we doing with the land sales, the old highway and the Salem Street?
So the old highway's still out to bid. Those bids are not due until August thirtieth, I believe. So next, I think next week those are due. The other land sale, I actually spoke to Mike this evening because we need to schedule an executive session to discuss that one.
Great. The, I know that you, the well looks like it got drilled. So have we got a conversation with the pump company? Are we moving?
We have to put it out to bid. So I guess you and I need to speak because I don't know what's a bid on that, so. Yeah, we need to put that out because that will be a significant cost.
All right. And then we're into old business, right?
Yes.
Rollin' Street, the finished hot top on Rollin' Street, anything on that yet? Can you, for the next meeting? I have been speaking with a group of people at the Bagnall School that are gonna volunteer on Sep- August twenty-sixth to spread the woodchips I'm gonna donate. And I was just wondering if you knew when the fences were gonna come down?
Yep. So I spoke to the highway department, and we've spoken to the fence company to see if they could go out on Friday, the twenty-fifth, and remove those fences. So if the fence company can't come in, why are you making a face at me?
Because I got to haul five loads of woodchips in there for Saturday morning.
I can certainly have it done earlier. We just, I just was afraid if we remove the fence.
I can get them in there.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly, we can see if they'll do it Thursday. But I have the highway on backup that if the fence company can't come out, they'll just take it down and pile it up.
I went down there today to try and drop it off, but I just can't get in there with the fence, so. All right, whatever we can do. I know the people are coming early in the morning. And I was hoping to have everything in place when they get there, and then I'll just work with them spreading it. So whatever we, whatever we can do.
Taken down earlier. The fence company just has to call them, but they might not be able to do it if we only give them a few days. So if we call them now and schedule it, I can certainly see if they can remove it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, because, if I could get my, I was gonna have one of my help deliver it on Friday's five loads. It's gonna take some time. But I mean, if you can do it, if not, well, I'll work late.
So if we have it down on Thursday, that will work.
That would be good. Yep. I'll get him to do it Friday. And then obviously, we're gonna hopefully, the fence, the new fence going in will be after we do this.
They're scheduled for Monday, the twenty-eighth.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Hey, Bill, how big of a space you need to get your truck in there? I mean, can they just take down a section for you?
Yeah, those panels by the,
I don't want to drive on the new lawn. It's, they're fifteen-yard loads. So I really wanted to just back off the hot top right where they're gonna go, and then I can just kind of move it around so the people to spread. So it'd be much easier if they were gone.
So you, you can't just take down sections of the fence. You need to have it all down.
You could, but I mean, by the time you do that, you're gonna have most of it down anyway. I mean, if that works, if you can do, if we can, if I can do it sometime, Friday'd be great in the, in the morning, but if we can't, I'll work late Friday night or whatever.
That's when the old neighbor go down there with a boat cutter, man. We have that piece down.
No, it would come down pretty easy. It's just,
Where you gonna put it?
Your problem.
It's rented.
Okay, and, no, I think that's it for that. Go ahead.
Ed, anything?
Just one. Last meeting, we voted to extend an offer of employment for a town planner. I, I didn't hear any update whether she accepted or not.
So that was gonna be in my update. She reached out to me this morning and told me that she is declining her offer. She has accepted a position with the Essex National Heritage Area to work on their scenic byway program that runs from Lynn to Salisbury along the coast. She will be responsible for designing and consulting kiosks at nine visitor centers. So even though that is a part-time position, and this is a part-time position, she did not feel she could adequately put enough time into both, and that is more of a passion project. She did say, please convey my thanks to the Board of Selectmen for their time and interest. She thought, she was very impressed with the town and the professionalism and knowledge of a planner's role in town government. She felt that this board, your questions were wide-ranging, incisive, and she was honored to be your choice. But she is sadly declining her offer.
So we get to go all the way back out again?
So it's up to this board how you'd like to proceed.
I'd make a motion that we reopen it.
Second. Absolutely.
Ed, anything else?
Listen, I'll let you see it, you know what I mean?
All right. I don't have anything under old business. Next up, we have correspondence. We have the minutes from August seventh, twenty seventeen. We have a quote for the price of new Langley Adams Library lawn sign. Denise, did you have anything else for director's time?
Just a few quick things. So the first one is Thursday, August thirty-first. In this room, we are having, we're sponsoring the Red Cross Blood Drive. They are in dire need of donations. So one to six P M. here in this room will be a, the Town Hall Blood Drive. You can call one eight hundred RED CROSS or visit redcrossblood.org and enter Groveland for anyone that would like to schedule an appointment for that.
Why are you still on that subject? Are they gonna bring the new machine where they put an IV in each one and they just take out the red?
The platelets?
Yeah, and give it back.
I don't think so. I can certainly find out. I don't know that they were doing platelets. I think they were doing whole blood collection. I think platelets is a different drive, but I can ask them.
Yeah, that was pretty neat. And I think it gives them more than what they need.
Yes, but I don't think they're gonna do that. But I'll find out. Another, I don't know if you all got an email that came out from K P Law regarding the guide to revised law legalizing recreational use of marijuana. But I just wanted to point out a few things because we've talked about it.
Did that come by email?
Yes.
Could you forward it to us?
I certainly can. I'm sorry? No, it's just, it's just one image. But it just identifies, so with the recreational marijuana going into effect in two thousand and eighteen, it talks about moratoriums and local regulations. And I know we've touched upon it briefly on this board and how it may not be in the board's best interest to allow recreational use. So just one thing to note, with this new revised law, because our municipality voted in favor of question four on the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen ballot, which was two thousand eighty-nine yes to one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one no's, anything that's done would also require a ballot question. So if you decided to limit or not allow recreational use in town or recreational sales in town, it would require a ballot question as well as a town meeting vote. So that's just something that you'd need to keep in mind as we're progressing, that it would go beyond just town meeting.
And it has to be completed by July of two thousand and eighteen?
It does. However, there's something if, so you can put a December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, I think. Oh, that's medical.
I know the original date had been celebrated for us this year.
Yes. So we recommend that municipalities not seek to impose a moratorium beyond December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. However, if you're seeking prohibition or other limitations, but may not be able to have the bylaw or ordinance in place before April first, two thousand and eighteen, then they recommend putting in a moratorium. So for us, the timeline works that we would have, maybe not by April first, but relatively short thereafter, we would have our town meeting and then an election. But it would have to be timed to meet the ballot if you're looking to do anything prohibiting it in town. So we have to meet the guidelines of state election on when to get a ballot question on.
Which is when?
I believe sixty days before the election, but I have to confirm that.
Okay.
And they do, so the nice thing, which, like I said, I will forward it, they do have samples of town meeting articles, ballot questions, those that have to go before a ballot, those that don't. And like I said, we do fall into the category that we would require a ballot question if you're looking to put any sort of limitations or prohibitions on it.
And is that the document that you're referencing? Is that, can we get that by email? Can you scan it?
Yes, I'll send, I'll send it out. I'll forward it to you.
Perfect.
It just came up today, so I printed it off. And, and one nice thing to know is, it's kind of, it's on the same topic, but those host agreements we discussed when the company came before us, and there was some question on whether or not those would exist going forward. It's actually in the law now that it requires recreational and medical marijuana treatment centers to have a host agreement. It puts some limitations on them, but before it was kind of at the will of the company if you wanted to enter into one. Now it actually requires them. So.
When you say a host agreement, you mean the town has to agree to host them? Is that what you're?
It's what benefits the town gets for allowing a company to come into town.
Okay.
There's a final comp, financial compensation, you know.
There's no limits on that?
There are limits. So it's limited to three percent of their gross sales, and it has to be fees that are reasonably related. So for instance, Lisa, some other communities had additional police employees added on, parking enforcement, fire safety prevention, things like that.
Towns who got in early got a lot more.
Right. So, but they are still required. So that was one of the questions. But I will forward this out so you can read it. And just keep in mind, if you do want to act or start looking into some type of limitation on recreational, we should start that dialogue soon just because it does require an extra step in our case.
So, so that, what you just said, would really need to have a company in front of us in order to have conversations with them, in order to get to what you just talked about?
Oh, well, that's the host agreement part, yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
Right. So you wouldn't, you'd have to have someone in here that you'd be discussing the host agreement in order to go back and tell the town people what's going on.
Correct. But I think that's,
That's separate from the recreational.
So I was, I just,
So the first thing I think is addressing the recreational.
Correct.
And whether we as a town, you know, what's the will of the people in terms of recreational?
Correct. Correct.
And whether that should be a ballot question.
Well, it has to be.
Well, it has to be, but whether this board is going to support it as a ballot question.
Yes, yes. And the only reason I brought it up is because before you were on the board, this, this board had dialogue about putting in limitations when it comes to, came to recreational. So, if that is still the will of this board, then we should start that process so that we make sure we meet the deadlines for a ballot question and do what's necessary and so on.
And when you say start this process, what does that look like? Is that just having a dialogue about whether it should be on the?
Yes, and then making sure we have council review the question. Like I said, they gave us sample questions, but I don't know if we need to tailor it. It would require a zoning bylaw article if you're looking to put limitations, so we'd have to have an article drafted. So, there are just some steps that would need to be done, and I just don't want it to get lost once the budget season rolls around if this is a priority of the board.
And when will budget season start?
Usually right after the first of the year.
Next, next month?
No, 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 January.
January.
Capital's that's meeting next month, so in, in my eyes, it starts next month.
Yes, but this board really doesn't get underway until the beginning of the year. But I will send this to you all, read through it. If you, if someone wants to add it to the agenda, I can certainly add it for further dialogue, but since it came out today, I just wanted to make you aware. And then, I guess, just how would you like me to proceed? I know Lisa and Bill mentioned on the planner. What would you like for me to proceed with this?
So, I would make a motion that we reopen the search for that position.
I would second that motion.
You for the assessment?
You know.
How many applicants?
Can we take a vote on the, I don't think we take a vote on the findings director's time.
Not technically, no.
No.
We had three applicants, if I recall.
There were four. We put, we put three.
Three came before.
And one withdrew.
One withdrew.
One withdrew of those three.
All right.
One, no, yeah, no, yeah, I, I, I agree with the Selectmen, I second that motion again.
So, where, where, where could we put that vote?
Well, I don't think you actually would need to vote because it was posted. She's withdrawn or she's declined it. I can just repost it. So, as long as I know that that's the will of the board, I'll just repost it. I'll post it back tomorrow. Now, do you want me to, which I would recommend, it will cost a couple hundred dollars more again, to re-advertise it on the Mass Municipal, which is where we usually get the majority of our.
Is that where you got most of the last ones?
Yeah, that's where everyone goes to see those kinds, this type of position. So, it's, I think it's, it's by, it might, it might be like $180 to post it for 30 days, but I would recommend that's really the route we need to take. Okay, so I will post that again tomorrow.
Was that it?
Right, yes, that's all I have.
Moving on to Selectmen time. Ed, you have anything for Selectmen time?
Yeah, two, two things. First one, in, in three weeks, we'll have the September 11th memorial service. That should be finalized, if, if we're gonna do something again by the next meeting, maybe we'll put an agenda item the next meeting to just, at that point, we'll only have a week to go, but we need to, we need to start some kind of a discussion on that soon.
So, the next meeting is that Tuesday, the 5th, because of Labor Day.
Yeah, it only gives us six, seven days, six days before.
So, in the past, it's been me asking the fire department to do something. I think last year, this board took the lead on it.
Okay. Can we find out if they wanna take the lead on it?
I mean, I can certainly reach out to police and fire and see if they have anything planned and.
Yeah, find out if they have anything already started, and then if we can jump in on that, otherwise, then we'll take the lead on it and figure out who wants to say some words and when and where. I guess it'd be outside Town Hall here at 9:30 or so.
It's usually in front of the fire station. They, last year, I, I think we had Tracy come and ring the bell. I don't think we had any on the fire.
Right, because they had an event going on in honor of the, what year was last year?
They went to Haiti.
There was a special, was it 25?
15.
No, they were here.
It was 15.
Quite a lot.
25, holy cow.
They participated and then they, then they went.
Security check.
Yes, so, so we do it in front of the fire station. So, okay, I'll just follow up with them.
That was a conflict.
What was the other thing?
Oh, hello, I'm sorry. Are you good? I spoke to, four people spoke to me this last couple of weeks since, with a complaint again about the, the sound and the audio at Selectmen's meetings and, and boards' meetings that held in this room. That, and the complaint on, to everybody was that when they're watching it, they have to turn their volume on the TV all the way up and even on replays of the meeting. When the meeting goes out live, they have to do the same thing. So, obviously, there's something, there's something not right with the, with the microphones, maybe, and, and they, some of them, and they can't hear what's going on. So, maybe, I, I know we got new microphones, maybe two microphones in front of everybody. Or, maybe we should go back and look at having, instead of the wireless mics, hook up the old-fashioned wires. They seem to work better than what these will work, and if we're still getting complaints about it.
Are they, are they saying it's everyone or just certain people or across the board?
It, it, it's every, it's everybody, that, in, in every meeting, that it's, it's the same complaint. If we re-watch the meetings, the volume on the TV, all the way up, and I, and I can attest, excuse me, I can attest to that, and I'm sure others can do. So, there's something that's not working right, and, and it needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, and I can say, Ed, I've gotten a bunch of those complaints too in the last few weeks. And people either say if they turn it up for the sound, then they get like feedback, and you still can't hear it correctly, so.
It's not just Selectmen's meeting, it's, it's all, all board meetings in this room.
Yeah, I can reach out to Chris, because I guess we still don't have a cable advisory committee.
No, no, no.
I'll reach out to Chris and see what he can do.
Was that it, Ed?
That's, that's all I have.
Can I interrupt one more? I just wanted to let the board know. Ed made me think of it. I think it's September 18th, if you could put a tentative date. Town Council would like to come out and give an update on current legal matters. He needs to review the current cases, though, to see if it meets the criteria of an executive session. If it's an executive session, it may be another night if we can't fit it in, depending on how much, but that's a regular meeting night. So, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up, what we were talking about September. So, there may be an executive session that night, or it may be done in the public session, depending on what cases there are.
That's on the 18th?
On the 18th, yes.
That's a regular meeting night anyway.
Yes. But instead of, he said, you know, we could come in the meeting and then adjourn to executive session, but I think that's kind of unfair to people watching if we start the meeting and then leave and then come back. So, I think it's better to have an executive session, if it has to be executive session, either before the meeting or on an off night, just so that we're not interrupting our main meeting to break away. But I will let you know that as I hear, as he confirms with me.
Uh, Bill?
Um, how do we do on the bids for the pavilion? Anything yet? The repair of the pavilion?
Yeah, I actually follow, Kevin kind of, he was going to do it, and I saw him today, and I was gonna follow up with him.
Yeah, me too.
So, I don't know, last I heard, he was taking care of it, but I noticed that it still wasn't done when I came.
Oh, so you, it's, so someone's already contracted to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I'll follow up with him and find out what steps.
Okay, and the last thing I got in is the fire department fence. Is anyone gonna fix that?
I don't have the money to repair the fence, so I don't know.
What happened with the fence?
It goes back to last winter. One of the firefighters was responding to a call and skidded on the driveway and went through the fence, and that's why there's a panel missing.
Yeah?
Yes, yes. If you drive by, you'll see there's a hole in the fence. So, one whole panel is missing, and it's just something that I don't have the budget.
And our insurance won't cover it?
Well, if we put it through, they're gonna go after his insurance because it's not covered by workers' comp or liability because he's not covered while he's responding. He's covered when he gets to the job. So, it would be his auto insurance, and I don't know that that's the route we wanted to take against one of our employees.
All right.
So, right now, it's just kind of pending to see what we have with money and if it's something that we could be done. I actually asked the chief if it's something like the guys could do, like on a Saturday, just go and fix it, but he wasn't up for that idea. So, it'll just stay until I have money to fix it.
Isn't it, it's not a full section, though. It's not a full eight feet, right? It's, is it a full eight feet?
Yeah, I think it's one full panel.
So, that's a hundred bucks.
I don't think it was, from what I heard. It was more complex than that, but.
Really?
You have to take out, you have to dig up the, the post, and you have to tip, dig up, tip, actually, dig up two posts, tip the sections in, get the bottom rail out, replace it, and then put all your pieces back in, put your top rail, push it all back. It's all plastic. You know, it's, you know, it's a few hours to dig it up, take it apart, and re-put it back together, plus the parts, you know. I'm surprised the neighbors haven't complained from kids cutting through there and.
I actually don't think the neighbors complained because I think they cut through there. I'm surprised, like, the fire and police haven't complained that people are cutting through there, but I just, it's just not something I have budgeted or fixed. At this time anyways. That's it for me.
Lisa?
Thank you.
Bill?
Couple of things real quick. Dave Evans, some people may know him, some people may not. The, he was assistant principal at the high school for a long, long time. Just an outstanding individual. I can't say enough good words about him. He's decided to move on and pursue other interests. I just wanna wish him the best of luck. I know he's helped me out enormously with, three of my children have gone through, that's two and a half anyways, have gone through this high school, so he's been just a great help, and I wanna thank him personally and wish him the best. My youngest boy, to say, is a little bit mischievous, goes without saying, but this week, I got a call from Groveland's finest that he was playing in an area where he shouldn't have been, and I wanna thank the officers for going out there and setting him straight. And I, I reminded him, as I wanna remind everybody now, especially the young kids and the parents, make sure your kids are not playing in areas that's going to endanger them, because as I explained to my youngest, when you endanger your own life, you also may endanger the lives of other people that need to come and, and rescue you, and that's not fair. These people wanna go home at night. They wanna see their family, so don't play in areas that aren't safe. Don't do anything that's crazy and be smart about what you're doing and where you're doing it so that you don't endanger your own life or the lives of the people that will need to come and bail your butts out when you get into trouble. So, thank you, officers of the Groveland Fire Police Department, for that heads up, and thank you, and it's just a public service announcement. My last is concerning Groveland Days. I am just so disheartened to hear that we will not have Groveland Days this year. It, it, it's, I find it tragic. I know the folks that did it were, were just completely, completely committed to the cause, and I understand that they just no longer have the time. So, my big thing is volunteerism, folks. I'm looking for people out there that this year's too late, but really want to pick up that ball and run with it and bring back Groveland Days for 2018 and for years to come after that. I think it's a great way to bring the community together. I think it's a great way to meet your neighbor. The kids have a blast at it. I'd say the adults have some fun too at night. So, it, it's a real win-win, and I'd like to see it come back. So, if there's any folks out there that really wanna, maybe we can form a Groveland Day Committee and structure it somehow that, you know, everybody benefits from it one way or another. We get some corporate sponsors like they used to. I, I think it's worth bringing back if we can.
I think there was, at one point, a Groveland Day Committee years back.
I can say that I spoke to them when I found out that they were not having it this year, and I guess last year, they lost a significant amount of money. So, it's not just the volunteering. I think they, either attendance has dropped or the investment in the adults' evening hours just didn't pay off. I don't know. But they lost a significant amount of money, so. Maybe taking a year off will get people back up to wanna go and participate.
Well, I think there's a lot of folks out there with some, some great ideas and like to see them come to the table with those ideas and help us resurrect this great, great community event.
I think part of it was, what I heard, it was, was the restriction on, on where, where some of the activities were restricted. The activities were, would take, took place in a, in a spot in previous years that they weren't allowed to do it this year, last year, so that, that, that didn't help. But, yeah, they, they did have, they did have a tough year.
Do you know what those restrictions were, Selectmen?
Not, not offhand, but they, wherever they were set up in previous years, they weren't allowed to do that last year, and I don't know why.
I think they were set up closer to the tower the previous years, down on the walkway, and then the last year, they were more down on the softball fields towards the river. But I don't know if that's what they were getting at or not.
Yeah, may, may have been.
No, because I don't recall, the only limitations I think we put were the, it was under construction last year, or more of it was under construction. I think we had just paved or hadn't been paved yet, but we didn't limit them to where they could go there, other than, I think, the paving stuff, but.
Well, it's unfortunate either way, and I, I hope we can resurrect it as quickly as possible, because I think it really was a, a great community event that everybody really had a lot of fun at.
As an adjunct to that, I think, is it the townwide yard sale that benefits the council on aging? I think that's happening the 3rd, is it September 16th?
It is September 16th, yes.
And I think people can purchase, is it permits or whatever?
Yes, so you have to get a yard sale permit if you want to have your yard sale that day, and then as it gets close, so they will sell the maps to where the yard sales are, yes. So, those are, it's on our message board up front, it's on our website, and it's in the lobby here for the applications for that.
Was that?
I'm all done. Thank you.
So, I got a motion to adjourn at 8:17?
Motion to adjourn. At 8:17 PM.
Second? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Again, the next meeting is Tuesday.